We are dealing with a review of related literature. And in three parts, we are trying to see this topic as we have discussed day before yesterday. This is one of the most important topic for your PhD coursework. There are three credits given in this, to this topic in paper number one. Yesterday, we dealt with what is this process of knowledge creation which you have to keep in mind when we deal with literature review. So this topic, these questions which are coming on the screen are discussed yesterday. Yes, what is there to be known, what is the relation between know and the known and how do we find things out? Which becomes a kind of through so hurry window, we have tried to see the things. And we have seen that there is ontological question, there is a epistemological question. And then it is a methodological question. So two aspects, ontological and epistemological, we have dealt yesterday. We have seen that how we come to know about the, or we can study the the science of being or science of existence or the science of knowledge creation. What are the parts that were dealt yesterday? When it comes to methodology, the question of methodology, obviously we have to deal in a different way. But one of the aspects of looking at methodologically at anything is also through literature review. Literature review becomes one very important pillar for, for any research or any methodology of any research. Literature review is the, one of the strongest pillars that we, we can say about it. If the literature review is poor, there are chances that your entire research can also be very poor. If your literature review is poor, then there are all chances that your entire research may be very poor. So this becomes, we can say spinal code, this becomes a kind of a spinal code of the entire research. Why, why do we say that this is so important? Why we said this is very important and students, recent scholars should always be told again and again about literature review? Why we try to make a very significant chapter also in PhD thesis about literature review? That is, we are going to try to answer those questions in our today's discussion. So many students are instructed as part of their research program to perform a literature review. Without understanding what a literature review is. So, and so what happens is that many times they do things which are actually not literature review. Whatever they do actually may not be considered as, as a part of literature review. So we have to be very alert about whether we are doing exactly what is expected from us. Whether my direction, my movement into that methodology is, is right or not. Am I confident about that, that well, I am doing a proper literature review? I am trying to answer the questions which are supposed to be raised in literature review in a proper way or not. So we have series of questions and as this PPT was shared in advance with you, you are aware that in these slides, we have raised more questions than answers. There are many more questions that we have to ask ourselves, am I doing this, am I doing that or not? So you won't find a direct answers to the things, but there will be questions that will be given. So everybody keeping their research area in mind will ask those questions to their research topic. So knower is trying to ask question to the known, what is to be known and then they try to make a space there. So let us see, what is literature review? A literature review is an account of what has been published on a topic by accredited scholars and researchers. Now in this, this particular definition, if you try to look at it, then the very important word here is accredited scholars and researchers. That is very, very important. In literature review, you may be allowed to review PhD thesis and articles also, journal articles and PhD thesis also. But this is very important point that you have to keep, keep in mind that are those people whose thesis you are evaluating? Thesis or articles, are they accredited scholars and researchers in that area? Has their work been considered as seminal work then? Otherwise, any thesis if you download or any article from any journal, if you are trying to do a literature review, it is not going to give you any significant thing. It will give you something that is mediocre and you also will follow those steps which are below average. And even your work may also be below average or mediocre. So that is very important that you have to keep in mind that accredited renowned, renowned person in that area, is that work anywhere very significant or not, that you have to always keep in mind. Those who have done MA in, in our department, if you remember, we have done a workshop when you were in third or fourth semester about how to identify the qualitative resources from internet. What is problem with Wikipedia if you think we are discussing that article and we gave you a worksheet? That on this worksheets, if you are getting maximum point out of four, then you can say that well, this work is good. And one of the most important parameter, parameters in that was about who is the writer? The authenticity of the writer, is he an academician who is an expert in that area or not? That was, that was very important point to judge the quality there. So that is one very important point that you have to keep in mind. Occasionally, we are asked to write one as a separate assignment, like you have a separate assignment in literature review and then there is a chapter in thesis also. Sometimes in the form of annotated bibliography, but more often it is part of the introduction to an essay, research report, dissertation or thesis. Sometimes there is a separate assignment and by and large, it is also part of, a part of introduction of research paper, dissertation or thesis. So the same way, it becomes a part of introduction generally, but if sometimes our, our literature review is very significant, very significant, then we can have a separate chapter also. But is not very significant, then it can be merged together with introduction also. So again, that will be your choice whether you want to keep it with introduction or a separate chapter that you can decide in consultation with your supervisors there. This word annotated bibliography, annotated bibliography, what is that? Now, when we understand annotated bibliography, you will find that in many thesis that you are reviewing or you have seen from Shodh Ganga or any other platform, that most of the time people do only annotated bibliography instead of literature review. They just list down chronologically that this work is done, that work is done, 10, 15, they pick up and they write a summary of what is there or abstract of what they have seen in those things. That is what normally they all see. Now that is annotated bibliography, it is not literature review. So sometimes to, to know what it is, we have to say what it is not. What it is not a deridian way of looking, neti, neti, it is not this, not this. By doing not this, not this, we can reach to exactly what we are trying to define. So to differentiate is one of the best way to define anything. To differentiate is the best way to define something. So differentiate and then we find that well, it is not annotated bibliography. Annotated bibliography will be one of the steps, one of the steps of reaching towards, towards literature review, but it will, it is not going to be what we call it as this. This is very important image that you have to always keep in mind that when we do any academic research, we are standing on the shoulders of the previous scholars. We are standing on the shoulder of previous scholars. Why this image, though it is a humorous image, but it is very important? Because most of the scholars, they want to say that well, why should I read other people? I have my own unique ideas, I have my own genuine thoughts. If I will read other people, my ideas will be corrupted, I will be under the influence of those ideas. So if I want to be unique, if I want to be, I want to be very innovative, creative, then I should not read other people. That is what they say, that why should we have theoretical backbone? Like here you can say that giraffe is your theoretical framework and you are standing on a theoretical framework like a zebra and you are seeing beyond something. Or this, this giraffe, giraffe is all what previous scholars have seen. And when you are on the shoulder of, of some giants, you are able to see farther, you can see much farther, that is your advantage. And what is already been seen, you do not repeat it. You do not repeat what is already been seen by others. So if I don't know what other people have seen in this area, then I will see only that only up till that far or not even that far also. I will not, I will be very short sighted in my research and I will just do something that is already done by other, other people. Secondly, people, many time research scholars do not like to go much into theories, theories or review theories. And so they say that in my area which is a new text, so there is not much work done. Now it is not possible that any of the work that you are picking up, nothing is done. It is not only about the text that you are selecting, it is the general area that you have selected. In that area, what work is done, that is very important. So if you are working on some new literary text which is just published in 2020 and you said that well, there are, there is no thesis, there are no articles, there is nothing on this, what, what should I review? Then you have to locate that text into discourses. What are the discourse? Is the text about racism? Is the text about translation, about comparative studies? Is the text about culture? Is it about history? What is the text about? Is it about feminism? What is the text talking about? Something that talks, text must be talking about. And then that discourse is already there for so many years, so many years that discourse is already there. Go into that discourse and find theoretical framework to study that particular text. Locate that text in a proper context, that is where also it can help. But always remember this and this you will get if you want to get more firm, firm grounding into this idea, then you can also read Dryden's essay, Essay on Dramatic Poetry, there also he says the debate between modern and the ancient. There also he said the ancient, modern are standing on the shoulders of the ancients. So they are able to write better plays, better play, he wanted to prove about the better plays are written by moderns rather than the ancients. Why? Because they are standing on the shoulder. Then apart from that, if you want to see another idea, then it comes from North of Fry's essay, Archetypal Criticism, which is very significant essay. Yesterday also, we, we discuss that, we refer to that essay in terms of inductive method, deductive method, centrifugal way of looking at the things. Remember those examples of that literature is like a music, literature can be seen like painting. So how very, in a broader aspect, he is trying to locate literature into some discourses, North of Fry. If you have forgotten, go back to that essay, read that introductory part of that essay and you will get many things to write about your literature review also. It is about locating literature into, into, into larger discourses of knowledge systems. Knowledge, you said that if, if physics is a knowledge system, science is knowledge system, applied sciences are knowledge systems. Why those sciences are, are valued more than literature? And then he said that well, we need to, we need to look at literature the way they look at, they look at their discipline. And if you are not doing that, then it is problematic. So in your research, you, you have to see that you are not only sitting in a dark room with a small candle around it. But it is like you have to brighten the entire hall. It means that in, in that hall, that hall is your general area. The hall is a general area and, and your text is going to be something like a candle in that dark room. But your candle has to brighten the entire room, means entire general area where your work is there, you have to brighten that. And then you have to spotlight on, 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 on an area in which you are working. That's why standing on the people who has already done the work in that area, general area, theoretical framework is very, very important thing here. Well, now let us see why, why part, then we will see, then we will also see how it can be done, okay? Why? What is the purpose of a literature review? Why, what is the purpose of literature review? Well, in writing, the literature review of a purpose is to convey to our reader what knowledge and ideas have been established on a topic and what their strengths and weaknesses are. So now you are getting the point very clearly, why you are doing this? You want to tell other people and to yourself also, to yourself also, that what kind of work has been done? Or you can say what knowledge and ideas have been established? See established here? It is not like a passing thought that somebody has said, but it is not very much established in, 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 in the way that people are debating or discoursing about it on that particular topic and what their strengths as well as weaknesses are. For example, if you take topics like modernism and postmodernism. People even today, even if people say that well, postmodernism also is now dead. Still people say that well, the debate between modernism and postmodernism has yet not ended. People are still not able to define properly what is modernism and what is postmodernism. And people keep on debating and so, and all those debates and you read, you will find that they are trying to recontextualize art in different context. And then they say well, here is modernism and here is postmodernism. So that is strengths and weaknesses. There are still weaknesses in, in many discourses that people are not able to narrow down to zero down to something. That they are not able to conclude that okay, now this is done, now no more debates. So strengths and weaknesses, we can see here. As a piece of writing, the literature review must be defined by a guiding concept, our research objective, the problem of issue you are discussing and your argumentative thesis. So in this, in this point, when you do literature review, there should be something to guide you. Because you are now going into an ocean, you are going into Samudra. And, and there are lot many things about those things. There should be a compass, compass that the sailors give with them, compass for the directions. So a GPS, if you want to use the word, you should have a GPS where you can, you can say where you are located and in which direction you are going, you are mapping. And what will help you to map, map your, your direction is your research objectives. That what you want to do in this research objectives, the problem or issue you are discussing, what is the problem that you are discussing? Now see there, there should be a problem, so you are trying to answer which you might have tried to say in, in, when you were selected for the PhD also, you will say, and then you might have realized also that well, this is not enough. Still something more is to be done, something more you have to do and discuss that, that what is problem? Why, why am I taking this topic? What am I going to answer in this? This all should always keep on hovering over you, this all questions that gives you direction that what you are looking for. Or your argumentative thesis here. It is not just a descriptive list of the material available or set of summaries. So again, not, what is it not? It is not the list of, list of, in a process will tell that you have to make a list also, but that will be a step. That will be one step or you can say first step in doing literature review, but it will not be the final product. Final product is not what list of material available, listing chronologically, alphabetically, annotated bibliography, a paragraph written on that, no, it is not, not that or set of summaries about those work, it is not so. But it is a part of a process. So this will be, you can say first step, annotated bibliography will be the second step of the literature review that we have to do as a part of our assignment. Why do a literature review? And then there are many, many questions that we can see here, yes, many, many questions we can see. Very important one, very important which you might have already done before your, before your selection of topic. That you might have done and that is to identify gap, to identify that well, here is the research. It is saying something this, there is something that they are telling something, but there is some gap, there is some gap. Now you want to bridge the gap, you want to bridge the, the gap that you want to say that well, let me fill this or up till here people have seen and then there is a vacant area. Now my research will have to fill that. So that is, that it is supposed that you might have done. Now you may question that well, we have done, but it is not enough. Or we were not understanding still the gap or how to find the gap and it requires lots of reading also. As a part of PhD coursework, when you will do all this thing again, you may perhaps find a newer gaps or newer questions which you have initially not put in your, in your research proposal also. There are all possibilities that all those things will again come up. Now that is why, that is why now UGC is recommending that coursework should be done before the candidates are selected. Before the candidates are selected. So under the coursework, they, they again try to question the topic, the area. And everybody, those who pass the exams PAT or exempted from NAT or SAT, they all compulsorily do coursework. All, even Enfil and everybody, they do coursework and then they select the topic based on what learning has happened in the coursework. And, and then they are selected, then only, no, so coursework will be done by hundred and hardly ten will be selected. Hardly ten will be, that is now, so many universities have started doing this also. And those rules also will be coming up very quickly, that coursework will be compulsory for everybody, those who pass. And after that, a few will be selected from, from that also. Then to avoid reinventing the will, yes, at the very last, it will save time and it can stop you from making the same mistakes as others. So reinventing the will. So if somebody has already invented something, why am I doing that again? If there is already people have worked and enough material is there on this particular poet or this writer or this concept of teaching language or this, then what am I doing here? Why, why should I do that again then? What is my concern? Is that still incomplete? Whatever is done is incomplete then? Otherwise, if I have to just reinvent, then there is no purpose of doing that. To carry on from where others have already, others already reached, reviewing the field allows you to build on the platform of existing knowledge and ideas. Now this is very interesting point. I would like to share one anecdote here, that where people have left, where some people were doing the work and then they left and then they, they were discussing in the final part about the limitations or where their, their research can be carried on, their research can go in which direction that they were talking about. And then nobody has walked on that path, then nobody has walked on that path. So that, that is uncredited road, the, the, the road is not taken by anybody yet. Now let me take that road, let me try to walk and see if I can find some, some, some beautiful destination through, through that path or not. The anecdote is something like this, that Charles Darwin, Charles Darwin, as we know, the one who gave the theory of evolution. He was a very old Charles Darwin, very old fellow was working in his botanic, botanical garden. He was working there and he was experimenting on, he was trying to observe that there are plants. There are plants that eat insects, the plants which are non-vegetarian. The, the plant is a vegetarian, but the plant which is non-vegetarian. And, and his question was that, that how do a plant come to know that this is my food? So he was putting sand, but the plant was not reacting. Then he was putting boiling eggs, but still the plant was not reacting. As when the insect is put, the plant reacts and will eat away the insect. So he said that what are the senses that the plant, now this is a very genuine question. And now, and this is also study of nature only, this also is a study of nature, but he was doing. And then somebody is passing and is asking to old Charles Darwin that what are you doing? He said that I'm, I'm trying to see, he said that well, if for, for the completion of this research project, it will take one or two decades, but you are not going to live so long. Why are you doing, why are you wasting your time now in this? He said that well, I will, I will, I will die with so many questions for the other people to do. Let me die with so many questions that well, these are all areas which I wanted to do, but then death came and I was not able to study nature. And so there is immense possibility of studying nature even today. And, and physics is studying nature, chemistry is studying nature, biology, they all are just studying nothing but nature. Human body, universe, the relations, animal, vegetation world, all are involved in this process only. And we are also involved in, in, in the process of looking at a nature, but in a different way, with a different context there. So this is very important to find that where the researcher has left something which we can pick up and we can move on in that direction. Literature review will tell us this. To identify other, other people working in the same field, a researcher network is a well, this is very important point. Other people working in our region, we have to make a network of those people also. Now today, now see this, when, this, we were talking about five, seven, 10 years back, when we are talking about literature review and this point was given, people used to question the, how do we know? How do we know that who are the people working throughout the world in my research area? It is very difficult to, to find that. But today because of social media, networking is very easy, it is very easy. What you just have to do is to that, is that, that whatever work you are doing, keep on posting about it. Keep on posting something about it, keep on posting simplest kind of questions about that also. And somebody will come and tell you this or that, and then you will realize well, these people are in this network, in this loop. And then you can make a loop and you can tag those people and then you, you, you will have a beautiful company of lot many people who keep on helping each other. But keep on sharing your research on social media, either have Twitter or Facebook, something where people are engaged in that and then keep on writing. Don't hesitate to write about your research. There are various benefits of that, there are various benefits. Other benefits we will talk, when we will also discuss Richard Eltich, The Art of Literary Research. At that time also, we will refer this point again. But here, to make a network of what people are doing, what kind of study they are doing. So people are not repeating and they are helping each other in one or the another ways. Okay, to increase your breadth of knowledge of your subject area, obviously that is important to identify seminal works. Seminal work is very important work, seminal work. So the theorists, the, the, the researchers who are established in that region. So for example, when you think of deconstruction, you obviously remember Jack Derida, Derida or Derida. You can't, you can't talk about deconstruction without Derida. Because he is the one who has given the seminal work and his seminal work was nothing but a seminar paper. It was a seminar paper. Imagine that what kind of seminar paper it was that it, it, it built up the entire new way of looking at everything. Histories, feminism, post-coloniality, criticism, everything has changed because of that. And when you think of practical criticism, you remember I.A. Richards. When you think of new criticism, you along with him, you remember T.S. Eliot and, and Clarence Brooks and so many. These are all those, feminism, if you remember, you remember Virginia Woolf, Simone de Beauvoir, seminal writers. The same way, in whichever area you are working, who are these writers who may be considered as seminal, seminal work? That should be known to you, that should be known. So very easy question when people ask that you are working in this area, who are the important? And then quickly you name these people, that these are the people who are, who are considered as seminal. Their work is considered seminal in this region. To provide the intellectual context for your own work, enabling you to position your project relative to other work. So our work again is connected with lot many other work. So we connect in relation to other work, where is my work standing? That positioning also is very, very important to, to see here. Then a few other questions or the guiding, guiding sentences that we can keep in mind here are this. To identify opposing views. Now this is something that is very important. When you do literature review, it is not only to find what is supporting your arguments. If you think that well, my objective is to look this, but if there is somebody who is opposing that, that very idea is opposed by somebody, then, then what? That is very valuable, that is very useful. So it gives you a chance to answer those opposing arguments, opposing arguments. So if you find these arguments, it is very good, your search in literature review should be to see that who, who are those people or who are those researchers who have said that this will not work? If you are doing in ELT, then some people say well, this will not work, it is, it is very valuable. Well, when it comes to, for example, if you are trying to do something about online teaching, online English language teaching, then you find so many voices that say that well, online will not work. So many, so many researchers also will find, you find very few voices which says that online also is very significant. We will say online also is very helpful, very significant, it is beneficial. But you will find that 99% of the people will say that online is not working, that is a very prominent way. And that is very good, that is very good. Because that, that helps you if you are looking in a direction that well, against all this thing that online is good, then it gives you an opportunity to think a lot, to think a lot, to, to experiment a lot, to read a lot, to try out a lot, to go out of comfort zones, so many ways. It helps when there is opposing view to that. So look, look for this, opposing views, which is very, very important. See the, the, this debate, if you will see the history of criticism in many terms, you will find that there is always this opposing voice that has helped in establishing something. Helped in establishing something like for example, poetics, Aristotle's poetics, if it is considered as seminal work so far as world tragedies are concerned, it is for great tragedies. But even for the world literature, not only tragedies, but even if you want to say what is literature and then catharsis and other thing become very important, such a seminal work, if Aristotle was able to give. work, if Aristotle was able to give, that people cannot talk about literature without referring to Aristotle's poetics, then that is the result of the opposing voice and that was Plato's voice, who said that poets should be banished, literature is something stupid things, it is too much of sentimentality, it is all lies and we should be in quest of truth, not lies, so we don't want literature. If that voice was not there, perhaps Aristotle won't have thought of writing a poet. The same way, when you see Sir Philip Sidney's Defense of Poetry, when he is writing in Renaissance time, then also there was an opposing voice that these poets are this, writers are this, they are, they are doing less vicious kind of a thing and so it is not necessary there. When Dryden wanted to write this, that what is the importance of English play or the contribution of moderns, modern dramatists, then also there were many voices which were going against that French are better than English, French are better than English. And so even when Wordsworth is writing the poem and then there are voices, he has to keep on writing preface, seventeen ninety-eight preface, eighteen hundred preface, eighteen zero-two preface and that preface became very valuable, a new definition of poetry we got, we got a new way of defining poet also from that because there were oppositions. So time and again, throughout the thing, even in the time of new criticism, if Eliot said about the importance of tradition, it was Harold Bloom who said about anxiety of influence, he told about anxiety of influence, that also is very important, that if you think of tradition, then being under the influence of somebody is full of anxiety. So that was an opposition voice. So constantly we find that this opposing views always help in establishing something in a much former way. So your research also should have, or it has to review, review the opposing voices also. To put your work into perspective, okay, fine, to demonstrate that you can access previous work in an area, to identify information, ideas that may be relevant to your project, to identify methods that could be relevant to your project, yeah, methods, different way of approaching and doing the work is also very, very important aspect. So when you will see various researchers, then you will also concentrate on what method they are applying. One of the methodological aspects for theoretical work is feminism is like you are applying theory and then you are trying to look at those things. But in terms of ELT or concerned about teaching something, language teaching in different contexts, then there may be survey method, there can be fieldwork method, there can be observation of several things and many practical aspects can be applied by the researcher who are doing theoretical work also. It all depends upon their imaginations, whether they want to pick up something and if you are, for example, doing on retellings, I don't know here anybody doing on retellings. Bhumi, what is your topic?
Imperism and socio-cultural study.
Socio-cultural study of?
Selected novels, that Tatwamasi, Akupar, Siddharth.
Yeah, okay, okay, fine, yeah, it is not about retelling there. Otherwise, various pieces of something significant can be given to other separate people, group of the people and we can ask that, well, what do you think about this work? It is once here it is said about this, the other place it says something else, at the third place it is saying something else, that how you look at those things. I think when, when many of you were in MA, we discussed some of those retelling aspects with the reference of Ramayan, if you remember, when this book, The New Tellings of Ramayan by Amish, Amish really, so in one of the chapters, he writes that Ram and Lakshman are going for Shikar, they are hunting deer and they are saying, they are talking that, well, today we will have a good, healthy food, nutritious, proteinous food we will have, those things. Now, if you give this piece to those people who has grown with Tulsi Das's Ramayan, Tulsi Das's Ramayan, they will be in shock, they will say that, well, what is this written here? So then Walmick is Ramayan, will tell something else. So if you just pick up a piece and tell people and then reactions, their reactions also, so it is methods, how you, in theoretical work also, you can think of variety of things where practical work can be very important. One of the reasons that our research works, that is literature research work is not valued much by the people by and large, is that, is because we are not practically becoming useful to them, practically we are not engaging them or practically we are not involving people like the way science or technology or other researchers are practically useful to the people in a direct way. So if somebody has just invented this specs, you can say that these are very useful. So if somebody says that, well, I will put a magnet here, I will do a magnet, that also is useful, I will make a, it is problematic to hell, then I will make a kind of a string here, then also it is useful. So you are asking people what problem you have in spectacles and then you do something and people are using it, how are they going to use the usability? The pragmatic aspect of our research is still a huge problem and how we can address or we can narrow the gap that our research work can be very useful to people, that also is very important. See this research work, that is Mr. Clement, who has come from Africa as an international student, is doing the work and we have converted his research outcome into a course of academic writing. So that is the usefulness, that how, how now that outcome is going to help many students in improving their academic writing skills. You also might have joined that course to understand that what is that that is expected when you also write, when you also, if you have mastered academic writing, it is very good, otherwise you also have to undergo that process of understanding academic writing and then how to write your argumentative chapters in thesis, that also is very important part of that also. So that is the significant, but that is an outcome. How our researches can be, can be very useful in that term, that is very important. It is not to say that our researches which are about post-coloniality or about feminism, about culture are not useful, they are also very useful. In a larger run, they are, they are going to be of great interest and use, because we have to understand cultures, we have to understand people, we have to understand human beings, these are very important aspects there. But at the same time, if we can also answer some of the concerns of today, right now, how it can be useful, then it will be, it can be very good also. As far as the literature review process goes, ultimately the goal for students is to complete their review in the allocated time and to ensure that they can maintain currency in their field of study for the duration of the research. Now, this is very interesting point, that is about time. Now, as I said that it is an ocean, literature review is like going in a small boat in an ocean and then there are all chances that we get lost into the ocean, we can get lost and we cannot, we cannot find the shore anywhere. So we have to keep in mind that we have a timeframe, within a limited time we have to do, it is not a lifelong process. So that, keeping that timeframe in the mind, we have to, we have to try to see that maximum what can be covered up. But remember, there is, there is no limit of literature review. So if many times research scholars ask us the question that, if I review five will be enough, if I review ten, will it be enough? We said that, well, five, ten, hundred thousand, there is no limit of literature review, even if you do five thousand, then also it is still incomplete. See what is your research objective? Are you able to find some interesting trajectory, interesting gap, interesting space which you can fill up, then with one dozen or twenty research review also, it is good enough, it is good enough, if you are able to strike that, then. But if still after doing that also, you are not able to find and you still find that, well, this, there is already a work, that question, somebody has done the work, I get a third question, again there is a work, then you have to keep on doing, you have to keep on sailing from, from one ocean to another ocean, from this, keep on moving, keep on moving, until you find that space that, well, here, it seems there is nothing. Now let me start, then your literature review comes to an end there. Two important objectives of a literature review are first, information seeking, that is ability to scan the literature efficiently, efficiently using manual or computerized methods to identify a set of useful articles and books. First is information seeking and see this ability, ability to scan the literature efficiently. Now, scan is means that there are various styles of reading, there are various styles of reading. To our MA students, when you were appearing in this feedback about flipped learning, you might have seen some of the questions, that there are four styles of reading, skimming through, scanning through, that, and in that it was, if it is not till you can go back to your email and you can find these styles of reading, that will help you to understand. So literature review is not reading word by word everything, it is not reading word by, that word by word reading and doing analysis is for your genuine work that you are doing. But all other things you have to scheme through, you have to scan through. So sometimes when you are reviewing an article on internet, you get abstract and if you get conclusion, you get some ideas, that this work is about this, it is trying to talk, it is useful or not. If it is useful, you will read thoroughly, otherwise you will not go, but you have reviewed it, you have reviewed that article by reading abstract or conclusion or introduction and conclusion and if you are interested, you went into the methodology also and analysis also. You can see four components of any research article, when you review introduction, there is abstract first, you consider it as zero, then there is abstract, then there is introduction, then there is methodology, then there is analysis and then there is conclusion, conclusion, this part. So if you read abstract, you say that whether should I go inside or not? So when you go inside, go to the conclusion, read conclusion, if you find still interesting, go to the introduction, find interesting, see the methodology and then still interested, see the analysis, that is the process of reading an article, process. Now if you, again, if I want to repeat, you can say, first abstract, you found something interesting, directly go to the conclusion part, you found, well, good enough, what is the introduction, then you go to introduction, then interesting, then you see what is, what is methodology and then how the analysis is done. That is how you go through the reading of article and you find that is valuable or not, if you found it valuable, you will say that, well, thoroughly I will review this, I will locate it somewhere in my literature review, otherwise you can say I reviewed, but it was not very important, it will still be counted, it will still be counted, only reading abstract will be counted, only reading abstract will be counted, that you have reviewed that article and you found it was not very useful, that we also have to count, more than you move on into another steps there. Information seeking, this process is for information and then critical appraisal, the ability to apply principles of analysis to identify unbiased and valid studies. Then, when you are going from conclusion to introduction and still if you have still curiosity to know what is now coming is your critical appraisal, now you want to see what was the method of doing this and then what, how the analysis is done, there you are going to apply your critical appraisal, critically you will evaluate and you will see. Then, when you, when you ask a critical question, what you will say is that, are the conclusions correct or not? Are the conclusion correct or not? For example, if I am reading in a newspaper, if I am reading in a newspaper that the happiest country in the world is this, the second happiest is this, third happiest is this, India is at this position. So my question will be that, how do you know who is happy in a country? Country is such a large thing and there are so many people, how, so my curiosity will take me towards their introduction, I will read what they are, because introduction, they will say that what were the objectives to know? Then, then I will say what was your methodology? Then I will say what was your, and then in methodology I will read that they are saying that, well, we asked this question to ten cities of a country, they have selected ten major cities and in ten major cities, they have asked that question to five hundred people. Now, if you are just asking to people in Ahmedabad, Baroda, Surat, Bangalore, Delhi, Kolkata and also only five hundred people and I was not even asked whether I am happy or not, how can that, that outcome be a valid outcome about everybody in India are happy or not? Just by meeting five thousand people, five hundred people in ten cities, how do you conclude? So you say that, well, this is not reliable research, this is not reliable research because you're going to the methodology you founded. Then, if you still have critical insight, you can go to analysis and then you will have more question that, well, this is not fair, this is no way fair to judge the happiness index of any country by asking just a point zero zero nine percent of people only, you are not even asking fifty percent of the people, that whether they are happy or not. So that is where your critical insight is asking you that what is your outcome, how have you reached at that outcome there? Okay, the literature review must do these things, be organized around, related directly to the thesis or research question we are developing, synthesize results into a summary of what is and what is not known, identify areas of controversy in the literature, formulate questions that need further research. Okay, so organize around your question, what you want to see, organize your literature review around those things, so be very clear what you want to do. Synthesize the result in a summary of what is and what is not, what is not known yet, so that you can start working on. You have to keep lots of this material to knot down the things, so you keep on knotting down, when you do that, well, this is done, this is still remaining. Or you keep on knotting down your question, this, this is done or not, let me, let me have these questions in the back of my mind, so when I do literature review, I constantly keep on asking this and then suddenly you find, oh, this question is answered here, this question is answered now, so now that question is meaningless, it is already done. So you move on or you frame another question in the mind, that, well, this now, so then again you are doing, so your, your questions are getting empty, slowly and steadily you may find that many of my questions are now empty, all my questions are already answered. Then what will I do? Then I will have to again go into new questions, new way of asking those things. So identify areas of controversy, that is very helpful, very useful. See, this is, again, I am repeating, earlier also we have said opposing views, controversial point of view is very, very necessary for researchers. That's why researcher is not supposed to be the person, what we call it in Gujarati Kahavat, Santoshi Nar Sadasukhi, that is not a fair idea for a research scholar, you are not supposed to be, to be complacent, Santoshi, nahipan, controversial things are very important, that gives you a space in an interesting way, okay? And then formulate further questions according to your need. How, how we can do all these things, how? Ask yourself these questions, so how is not an answer, how is the list of questions? How to do is list of questions, keep on asking yourself this question, so you can come to know about how to do this. What is the specific thesis, problem or research question that may, my literature review helps to define? What type of literature review am I conducting? Am I looking at issues of theory, methodology, policy, quantitative research on the effectiveness of a new procedures, qualitative research, what is that, quantitative, qualitative? So am I looking towards new, new policy? Am I looking towards new methodology like ELT researchers tend to look towards new method of teaching something, they try to find a new method of teaching, but it's not that easy to strike at new methods of teaching, lots of works are done in ELT, but rarely you find that people are coming up with some new method of doing some teaching or other kinds of things there. Theory, if you are looking at theory, then how you are going to conduct? So keep on asking these questions, more questions there, what is the scope of my literature review? What types of publications am I using, journals, books, government documents, popular media? What discipline am I working? Ours is normally humanities and social science, ELT become also a part of social science or linguistic part and humanities by and large that we can see. How good was my information seeking? How good was my information seeking? Has my search been wide enough to ensure I have found all the relevant material? Has it been narrow enough to exclude irrelevant material? Is the number of sources I have used appropriate for the length of my paper or my thesis or the chapter or assignment, whatever I am writing, is it okay or not? So relevant thing, how many relevant things am I able to find? How many irrelevant things I am able to avoid or exclude? But you have to have a list of even the irrelevant material that you have reviewed, that list also is necessary, it is the first step of our process of doing literature review. Have I critically analyzed the literature I use? So critical analysis of that, not taking as it is, but I have to question the conclusions of the work that I am studying. I have to remember again, I have to question, I have to critically analyze the work that is been done or I am trying to, I am not taking that as granted, that, well, it is the outcome, your conclusion, I am taking it, no, not in that, I am questioning. Do I agree with that? I may disagree also with that, so I will point my point of disagreement also. So when we are looking for opposing views, we are also opposing some of the conclusions made by the other researchers. So, uh, when we are looking for opposing views, we are also opposing some of the conclusions made by the other researchers. In the area in which we are working. Instead of just listing and summarizing items, do I assess them discussing strengths and weaknesses? I don't have to just list down whatever work I have reviewed, but what I have to do is to discuss their strengths and weaknesses also. Have I cited and discussed studies contrary, contrary to my perspective? A very difficult position to, to take, but contrary to my perspective, have I cited or have I used? Or am I trying to answer those things also or not? Will the reader find my literature review relevant, appropriate and useful? Relevant, appropriate and also useful. Now, here, here your readers, are you yourself? You yourself, in thesis writing, your reader is you yourself, because your outcome of literature review, you have to discuss in your thesis. You have to analyze and you have to give new way of looking at those things there, okay? Uh, has the author formulated problem or many other questions? So, you can go through this also, is it clearly defined? Could the problem have been approached more effectively from another? These are the questions you can ask when you are reviewing a particular work of art, that the way that person has done the work. Can I question their methods, their conclusions, their analysis also can be questioned, that all, how do I do that? Their interpretations also, can I question those interpretations when I review? So, those all things can be a part of my literature review. Uh, author's research orientation and what is the author's theoretical framework? Uh, uh, so that also is what we try to see that when that method was, uh, uh, adopted by the writer. What was their theoretical framework that also I study while doing it? Uh, has the author evaluated the literature relevant to the problem or issue? That author also, what is the literature review by that author, that also is very significant. And so, we, we, from there, we go back to bibliographic record of that article, that book, that thesis, whatever we are trying to look. And then we try to cross verify that what are the seminal works referred by this. One of the easiest way also, you can say that when you pick up some articles or researches, research outcome for your review. Go to the bibliographic record and try to see, have they cited seminal works or not? In that, if you don't find any seminal work in citation anywhere or literature review, there is no need to review that article. You can say it will not be of good quality, that article will not be of good quality. It also should have cited some seminal works. In a research study, how good are the basic components of the study design? Uh, population, how many people are, it is again for survey kind of a thing. In text, how many texts are taken or which texts are excluded? For example, if you are working on authors, writers, then if you are selecting a few, people will generally are interested in knowing. Why have you excluded other, other texts or other authors of the, of the same area? If you are picking up, picking some American poets, people may be interested, why only this? Why not others? What is your justification? Now, we can't say that because I, I, I like this poet or because I, I love this author. So, I know that this likeness or love are emotional things and literature is about rationality. Sorry, uh, research is about rationality, here you have to rationally justify everything, that, that, that answer is not going to work. That I like this or I love this to read, so I am working in this area, no, that is not the proper answer. How accurate and valid are the measurements, uh, analysis and other things which are done, which we have discussed earlier, so we are not repeating it again? Uh, how does the author structure the argument? Can you deconstruct the flow of the argument? Can you deconstruct the flow when you are reviewing the work in, in that? Can you do that or, uh, not? Uh, in what ways does this book or article contribute to our understanding of the problem? Under study, in what ways is it useful for practice also? What are the strengths and limitations of the article that we are looking for? How does this book or article relate to the specific thesis or question I am developing? So, when you, if you just put this list of questions ready and you say yes, no, if yes, this way. Then the worksheet will be ready, this list of questions will help you. Uh, in each and every article that you want to review or a book that you want to review, these questions if you will put and you just tick mark, yes, no. If yes, how, write one or two sentences, your entire work will be very significantly ready to write later on. So, these are some of the, 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 the aspects, the question, the list of the questions that we have to ask ourselves when we try to. Do literature, uh, review, uh, there. Any questions, anybody here? Before we enter into our examples that we want to discuss, for examples, we want to, uh, study. Uh, which will be the third part of our session, not today, but in our next tomorrow's session. We are going to discuss about this four parts, but if you have any question here right now. Then you are free to ask that, uh, what can be seen here? If you have any question about this all things, uh, then you can ask a question here. Examples, uh, for examples, tomorrow we are going to, uh, discuss. Yes, any questions here? Related to your topic, if you are working in this line and if you have any doubt or question or what you are doing, then you can ask those questions. So far, when you were reviewing, were you able to find seminal works in your research area? Or counter arguments? Can you list down one or two, like this is the work and this I found and this was the counter argument? Which I was looking for or this helped me in giving me more questions or this answered my already existing questions? Yes, anybody, any questions? So, does it mean that the topic is very clear to everybody, that what you are supposed to do? No question means two things, either everything is clear or everything is confused. That now it is more difficult to even ask anything and so, uh, uh, we have no question. The confused state of mind also may not have a question or a very clear mind also may not have a question. So, can we conclude that it is all confused or it is all clear? Because this video recording will be also uploaded and many people will see and they also will conclude that. Well, the teacher was going on asking that any question, any question, but research scholars were having no question. Research scholars were having no questions, so without question, how are they going to do research? Uh, that is what people can conclude by even reviewing this video. When they review this video, then they also can say that.
Sir, uh, am I audible?
Hi, yes, yes, yeah. Yes.
So, actually, we have some questions, but we, uh, we are very hopeful that they all will be answered, that's why.
Uh, but like, like what, that if you can just put here, so we can say that, well, okay, this was, this was the question.
Okay, for example, uh, when we are writing our literature review, I mean, when we are referring different books. So, uh, I mean, um, I have seen some videos and, and read something about how to review a book. So, is it similar, like, uh, you can, uh, you can give brief introduction about the work? I mean, brief summary and then, uh, you have to do critical analysis of the work and also compare to other, uh, works done in the same area. So, if we are, uh, writing all these things in literature review, then, uh, is it the similar one as we are doing a bit book review?
Hmm, okay, so that is a good point, that whether it is similar to the kind of a book review that we write or not. Uh, well, it will be one of the steps of, before finalizing our literature review, one of the steps. So, uh, it is considered, you can say it is like annotated bibliography. Annotated bibliography where this is the work and the work is discussing all this and that is what you are writing. So, it is one of the steps. So, tomorrow, we will see this point also that, see, where do that come here in the process of literature review? Okay, so tomorrow we will keep that in mind, but you can say that it can be considered as annotated bibliography. But not what we term as literature review for research work. We'll try to answer that tomorrow, okay? In our discussion about examples, we will try to discuss that. Uh, the core part of that will be useful, it is not that you don't have to do the review the way do the review of any other things. But how to use that when we finalize our literature review, that is also very important. Yes, any other, the same way, any other questions?
Uh, and, and, and you know, there are different fields, for example, theory and author. And of course, the, uh, theory which we are applying to the author. So, if you are taking like this postmodernism and Julian Barnes. So, if you are reviewing, um, Barnes novels as well as, uh, the books on postmodernism. The third one is that the works which are already done on, uh, the same, uh, author. Like, uh, metaphics, I mean Barnes as a postmodern author. So, there are three things we are supposed to review. Uh, the books which is written, uh, which are already written on a postmodernism. Uh, the research work which are already done on, uh, Julian Barnes. And the third one is, uh, authors novels like, uh, uh, I mean fictional works. So, how to link everything?
Uh, yes, so, uh, uh, you, you have the work that is done on the author, you have the work that is done on the theoretical part also. And then you have to, uh, uh, think that how you have to link the things together. Now, the linking part depends upon what is your research question. Linking depends upon what is your research question or what gap have you found? And so, you are trying to move towards that direction where you found the gap and that is how you are using all this material that is written about Julian Barnes. Or about the theory of postmodernity that you want to question or you want to support, take as a support. So, theoretical framework which are observed by as many people and then you have a literary text. Uh, when you are trying to look both the things, through, through theory, you are going towards the text. And the text is supporting or sometimes even questioning, uh, the theoretical framework. Or it is giving a, a kind of a, a new dimension to look at that postmodernity also. That all is, is like a mirror image, it is both a mirror image which is supporting each other to look in a different way. So, how will you link those things and how will you add something to the, as a new knowledge? Your, your ultimate, uh, quest is to see that how do I add through my research something to the existing knowledge? Either in terms of reading of Julian Barnes or in terms of, uh, uh, of, of, of theory, that is postmodernity. If you are able to add something new, so far as the theory of postmodernity is concerned, through the reading of Julian Barnes. It is very valuable, it is very valuable work. But if, the, the, the lesser than that is, uh, giving a new, uh, dimension to read Julian Barnes through, uh, postmodernity. Also is good, but it is secondary of value, secondary of value. Uh, the ultimate goal of researchers should be to see that they try to look towards new theories, new theories, they try to look. Which obviously is very difficult, it is not easy, it is very ideal, ideal condition. So, like if you are doing a research in science, then what should be the outcome, that there should be patent on that science, patent. If, if there is a patent, then that work is valuable and not only that, that patent is to be sold in the market. So, that the corporate companies are making something out of that patent and it generates revenue. So, it is really useful to the people, then that, that research work in sciences is of great value. What is about literature, in literature, you won't find that you can do patent, but you can think of new theory, new theory. So, you can say that what are this theory, new theories from where it comes? So, when Aristotle was writing Poetics, he was giving theory to us. He was, when new critics were thinking, they were giving us new theories. Twentieth century gave was so many theories, but if you go beyond twentieth century, there are not many theories there. There are not many theories there, there was one way of reading literature, moral, philosophical way of reading literature and that was already there. But new theories emerge in large number in twentieth century, that's why many say that twentieth century is the, uh, age of theories. Every decade, you get some new way of looking at those things. Our research is supposed to give that, new theory, to look at those things, there is ideally. Otherwise, a text, a text can be read in a newer way, that is your, uh, connecting link that you have to see as a farthest ball. Uh, yes, the others? If you will put your questions tomorrow, I can incorporate your questions when we discuss practical examples. If you will ask today, then tomorrow those questions will be incorporated in our discussion about the, the practical way of doing literature review.
Sir, am I audible?
Hi, yes.
Uh, sir, I have one little confusion regarding that, that, uh, in literature review. Uh, uh, I know that we just have to use some article and thesis. But, uh, I, I don't know that can we, uh, use a book? For example, uh, in my research, uh, some books, uh, are written on functional English skills and ESP. So, can, uh, I review this book in literature review or not?
Uh, yes, of course you have to, books are to be reviewed, uh, uh, books, even policy documents, policy documents which are based. Because if you are looking about finishing schools and other kinds of things in language, then what are those policy documents? Which I think earlier also I told you that you have to refer to that, there you will find what were the objectives of finishing schools. Like, for example, Gujarat state is starting about finishing schools and other thing. What are the objectives, why they want to do that? What was problem with existing education system that you were not able to get what you want? So, what you want is like, you are preparing students for job markets and job markets were not happy with our product. Now, that, that becomes accepted fact, that becomes accepted fact that what, the way we deal with our, our, our education is. We are not getting, we are not making people ready for the jobs. And so, this is now directly coming to say that you give finishing touches in such a way that you are ready for, for some kind of work. It can be startups also, it can be jobs also, starting a new, new business or whatever it is, that all can be done. So, these are the, the concerns, these are the concerns, there are lots of controversies, there are lots of problems and it is coming as an answer. Now, you are saying, is this answer appropriate or not? You can also basically question what is education for? Is education only for jobs or is education for making human beings? Lot many things can be debated in that, so books you can review, thesis I told you. We, we tell that thesis are, are to be reviewed, but you have to see that that thesis is good enough or not. Is it really adding any value to the existing knowledge or not? Picking up any thesis from Shodganga and you start reviewing five, ten and you say, well, ten I have done. No, it is not going to work, you have to review that properly as we are asking the questions. Uh, you have to question that thesis pertinently to say whether it is really good or not. Uh, and, uh, and, uh, otherwise you won't be able to take that, uh, thesis. You can also counter argue in your review that this thesis is not looking into the direction that it has to do. So, uh, and see that, that, when you will do that, because we don't say that don't review thesis. Review thesis, but whether in the final writing of your thesis, in the final selection, you should add that or not. For that, a pertinent test is to be taken of that work and if it passes that test after your critical questioning. Then only you have to include that, uh, if it is very poor, you will not make any reference to that in your thesis. You will not try to criticize that work officially in your thesis, but you will know in your back of your mind. That, that, that work was, was nothing, it was, it was not telling anything. What will happen because of that? That, uh, you will realize that your research work also will be uploaded online and anybody will be downloading and reading your work. Anybody will download and read and the same way your work also be reviewed. So, everything goes in public domain now, everything goes in public domain. When we were doing our research work, PhD thesis were not a part of public domain, they were not part of public, uh, domain. And so, uh, people thought that well, this work will be only in library, it will not go anywhere. Uh, but now it is not so, now it is in public domain, it is, uh, uh, everybody's property now. Uh, and so, one has to be more careful than what people were doing a decade before. Just a decade before the way we are doing research. Now, we can't do the research in a similar way, we have to be more careful because it is now adding to, uh, the knowledge systems. Which are publicly accessed by everybody, that's how it is there. Uh, MS university came with a rule that before Vaiva, before Vaiva, the thesis will be uploaded. And it will be open for everybody to look at the thesis and they all will put online questions also. And if anybody will object or raise a pertinent problem about your thesis, you will have to answer that, then only Vaiva will be conducted. Otherwise, the Vaiva may not be conducted if you are not able to answer. Now, see, uh, we know the problem of anybody raising doubts and questions, social media's problem. problem is this, that anybody will can't question anybody. There is a learned scholar who posts something and anybody like Alia Malia will come and say, I disagree with you. Now, that is what happens in this also, that anybody can question and you have to give an answer, then only your Vaiva. After thirty days, your Vaiva can be conducted if there are no much problem or all the problems are answered, then only it happened. So, that is what will help you to maintain the quality of your research work also. So, books are to be reviewed, yes, books are to be reviewed, reports are to be reviewed, government documents in that case are also to be, to be reviewed there, okay? Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions? Yes, everybody, at least you should have at least one question to see what you are doing as a literature review, at least one question you all should have, that, so I can incorporate this in examples and I can suggest directly that this is the direction you have to move on. Yes, anybody else now? Yes, Amid Bhai?
Sir.
Hi, yes.
I have a question, sir. My work is on American transcendentalists, sir. You know that there are five writers, Walt Whitman, Henry David Thoreau, Val Ferroldo Emerson and Emily Dickinson, okay, sir? But shall I have to go thoroughly from history of American literature from first to last or only my work is only focused on American transcendent? So, what should be my focused area, sir? What should I have to read, sir?
Okay, so first, you have to locate transcendentalist into the American literature, first that. American literature itself also to be located into the world literature. So, you should be very clear that what is this definition of American literature? What is, why you call it is written in English, English language, it is almost similar to other European literatures. So, why, why do you call it American literature? Why, what does that nomenclature mean? Is it different from, from the, the English literature? English means Britain's literature or United Kingdom's literature? Religion is similar, so far as culture is also by and large similar. So, when we say Indian writing in English or Indian literature in English, it has much difference in culture, religion, society, people, but American and Britain or Europe has lots of connecting links. So, how will you define that? So, in world literature, how do you locate American literature? In American literature, how do you locate transcendentalist? And then in the transcendentalist, what new you want to see? What is there that is not seen so far? What is there? Because you will find lot many people have talked about transcendentalist. So, what is your question now? What, what is, that is, that is left out by the people, that is your quest and with that you are trying to do literature review, okay? Okay, yes, okay, next.
Sir.
Hmm, yes.
What if, you know, the book we are reviewing, it leads to another concept, for example, there's a leotard, postmodern condition, now there is a reference of, I mean, there is one chapter, language game. So, this leads to another concept that is given by Wittgenstein and we are, we are going, we are going to look at that concept. And even while understanding that concept, it leads to another explanation by another philosopher like Kripke. So, do we have to include all these things in our literature view? Because you know, it is going out of our topic. So, our topic remains aside and we have to look forward for all other concepts. So, do we have to give reference of all these things or if we can just keep everything?
You can, you can skip. In the first step of literature review, which we will discuss tomorrow, you can include all these things there, because first step will be making a table of whatever you have discussed from whichever work. So, that then later on, when you come down to narrow down to finalize your, your focus, that what you are, in which direction you want to go. So, then you will leave all other path, all other path, you will just touch and go, then you will, you can make a statement that, well, this writer speaks about this, but our, our way, we are looking in this direction, we want to give that, so we are leaving them aside. By making this two statement, you have reviewed also and you are told that why you are not going in that direction? That is the linguistic markers that you can use. With the help of that language, you can, you can, so within two, three lines, you review also and then you said that we are moving ahead in this direction. So, if somebody questioned that, why have you not talked about that? So, you can say, I have already talked about it also, but that was not our concern. So, it takes in a way, one or two sentence only, but you can show the direction that I am not going in that direction, I am going in that way. So, that is one thing that you can do when you write your full chapter in thesis, at that time, you have to use this. And here, when you will try to study this about assignment, at that time, you can use it into a larger tabular format and later on, you can remove those things. But out of this, these things are very important, so you are concentrating on this aspect.
Okay, sir.
Yes.
So, it means that when we, when we are able to finish our coursework, eighty percent of our PhD is already done, is it so?
Yeah, if, if you get the answers, direct answers, then it is done. If you get what you are looking for and then it is done, otherwise, it can be confusing also, that now, where will I go, what will I do?
Okay.
Yeah, so, if you get everything properly, then it is done, almost done. Like, major part is literature review will be done in coursework, that is major part and all the reading in paper two and three is done. So, then it comes about analysis only, that is the core part that will come down. So, if you do that, but if after doing that, if you find that now where will I go, everything is done, then you may be more confused also.
But sir, then we need more time.
Then you need, yeah. So, three years are there, three plus three years are there, three plus three years for all your PhD work. But in coursework, you have to go by time, that you have to complete the things in a, in a due time in coursework. Later on, you can carry on with all those things which you are not able to complete during coursework for writing of your thesis or for better understanding also. But coursework is something like, like a program, MA program, even PhD also is a program. So, like in MA, for example, when you are doing, there are many, I am interested in this and I, I want to do MF for five years. But you, if you want to, you can do, you can take a drop in exam, but you know that it is not a good idea, it is not a good idea to do MF for five, ten years. In the same way, coursework, there is a timeframe you have to complete and then PhD, three years, after three years, minimum you have to do and then you can submit as early as possible. Next three years can be given if you, it is required, but not more than six years, not more than five to six years are given for even PhD work also. And yet, if you think that, no, still I want to study, then take another project based on your research work. Here, you can complete the research, you can put down several limitations that up till here you have seen, there are still possibilities of looking all those things, but timeframe and other things do not allow you to look beyond this and then you can take those things as your research project and you can take ten more years to, to do that, that work. So, BA three years, MA two years, PhD three to five years, three to five years and then there is a lifelong learning, then you can continue learning throughout your life. Yes, Mega, Komal, Bhumi, any questions? Okay, so then we end our session here and tomorrow, yes, is it there, Komal or Mega?
No, sir, no question.
Okay, so tomorrow, we are going to see that how the assignment is to be written is for writing of the assignment, that is our prime goal here with example and then later on, you have to carry the same process for your thesis writing also. So, we end our session here, second part of this we have done and third part, we will do in our tomorrow's session.